Okay, I am going to call this, this is a Scarborough Town Council Wednesday, June 24th, 2020 virtual special town council meeting. It starts at 6:00 PM, I'm going to call it to order. The first item on the agenda is we are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and next we have roll call, Tody?
Counselor Pucci?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Kleistin?
Here.
Counselor Caterina?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Hambl?
Here.
And Chairman Johnson?
Here.
All present, thank you.
And before I call the first order of business, I'm going to remind everybody in the audience, we are about to go into executive session until 6:30. So we will be off the air until 6:30. So if you are one of the 29 people in attendance right now, please feel free to mute us and walk away and do something with your own time until 6:30. Order number 20058 is act on the request for an executive session pursuant to Title 1 of MRSA 4056C in consultation with legal counsel regarding the settlement agreement with Oak Hill Holdings LLC at all for a tax abatement for tax year 2018. And do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion, second.
And Tody?
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Kleistin?
Yes.
Counselor Caterina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hambl?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you.
With that, I'm going to ask every counselor, please put your mic on mute and please turn off your camera because you're going to go into executive session into Google Meet. So everybody, please turn off. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Tony, can you hear me? Tony?
Can you hear me, Paul?
Yep, you're good, Tom.
I kept getting a message that said too many parties on the call, on the call, and my mic was turned off.
Yeah, typically, that's, I mean, that, that is an auto feature that you would be on mute, but not to the extent that you were. You were on mute and immutable.
Yeah, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, hey, Tony.
You should be, you should be already.
You're nice.
Okay, I saw a little thing come up.
Yeah, all right, good. Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome. Got you covered.
Yeah, you're a quick study.
I try.
I don't think we've ever been accused of being unmutable.
Yeah, immutable. Okay, I believe, do we have everybody with us? Is Ken with us? Ken is not with us.
He is.
Ken, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can you turn your camera on when you get, yeah, there you go, perfect, okay. I am going to call this meeting back to order. It is 6:34. And before I call the meeting back to order, if there are no objections, I'm going to change the order of our old business, the order of the old business. We are going to move order number 20040, which is the second reading of the municipal budget. We're going to move that as our first order of old business, as it makes most sense workflow-wise for us and for those that are in the audience. So with that being said, we are on number, or order number 20032. It is a second reading on the proposed amendment, excuse me, second reading on the proposed FY 2021 municipal school budgets as amended at first reading on May 6, 2020. So the first thing, there are a few amendments. There's one pretty straightforward one. So the first thing I need to do is put this on the floor. So do I have a motion?
Paul, did you want to accept public comment?
Oh, yeah, I guess I'll get, yeah, I was putting it on the floor, then comment. That doesn't make sense. So this will be public comment. So Crystal, you are the one with your hand raised. Bear with me for one second here. Hey, Tony. Are you sure that I'm the host? Because I can't let people talk here.
Check now.
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Point of information, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What are the guidelines for comments?
The, we are going to stick with our typical guidelines that are posted in council chambers. In addition to that, I will not, if somebody comes in with their video, they will be just promptly blacked out, just, and just speak with audio only. Do ask that people keep it to three minutes, but I tend to be a little bit relaxed on that if somebody has something to say. And your name and address, please. Ms. Ash Cuthbert, you are first. I am bringing you in. If you want to just unmute yourself?
Okay, I think I did.
You got it, yep.
All right, um, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Crystal Ash Cuthbert. I reside at Oak Road in Windsor, Maine. I have been teaching in Scarborough for 25 years, and I am fortunate enough to represent the faculty members, ed techs, bus drivers, food service and custodians that work for our school department as their association president. Um, you know, looking at tonight's meeting and having followed all of your meetings, you asked the Board of Education to make their recommended budget and cut to 2%, and then they followed your orders, and then you continue to ask for cuts and cuts and cuts. And when they brought 2%, the council said that is not enough. Take more. And then cut more, cut more, cut more. And I'm telling you that it is not enough. Your approximately, what I can figure is just hovering about 1.16 is not enough. In a time of crisis, the school department is going to need more, not less. And as members of the council, you are just as responsible to the citizens of this town as our school board, and part of the citizens of our town are students. And I'm, I'm genuinely concerned that you're gonna pass a budget tonight that is going to hurt our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Ms. Leonhart, you are next.
Thank you, Stephanie Leonhart, Two River Woods Drive. In 2018, a wise man running for town council was quoted as saying, "I will support Scarborough students by working with the town council, town manager, and the Board of Education to ensure that our students, teachers, and administration have what they need to be successful in school and prepared for higher education, additional skills, and being lifetime learners after they leave." He was also quoted as saying, "We need to have the best teachers possible. We need to attract, pay, reward, motivate, and retain them with attractive, competitive compensation packages." These words were written by a current town councillor in response to questions sent out to all candidates by the Scarborough Education Association. Unfortunately, actions speak louder than words. It's time for the entire council to heed his advice. Ensure that our students, teachers, and administrators have what they need to be successful in school. This includes covering all the costs the district will incur as a result of the global pandemic without taking money away from the school operating budget. Attract, pay, reward, motivate, and retain teachers with attractive, competitive compensation packages. Stop focusing your attention on asking teachers to take a pay cut when they're already the lowest paid compared to similar communities. Ensure the Board of Education and educators are informed, included, and involved in key town decisions that may affect them and our schools. A great way of doing this would be for town council members to serve on the School Transition Reopening and Redesign Task Force, where all community members were invited to participate. Unfortunately, no councillors volunteered. Please do the right thing and support a budget that allows Scarborough to continue to have the best teachers, students who are prepared for higher education, and a property tax increase of less than 3%, which is not, in this councillor's own words, unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Layton, you are next. Sarah, bear with me. I'm just trying to get a few people out of the meeting. Okay, Ms. Layton, you're up.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Paul. So I, so I guess, Sarah Layton, I live at 46 Maple Ave., so I'm a resident of Scarborough, but tonight I'm actually speaking on behalf of the, the school board. And I, I shared this information with the council yesterday over email, but I did think it was important context going into the meeting for the rest of the public to hear. So bear with me as I sort of, I think this will be repetitive for you guys. I'm just gonna read a letter that we put together. I shared this information with the council yesterday, but I wanted to reiterate it publicly to ensure everyone following along from home is working off of the same information that we are. One of the challenges this budget cycle has introduced is that the board and the council have not been working off of the same baseline numbers, making it difficult to fully understand the impact and follow along. While I appreciate the reasoning behind the council iterating from your first reading budget, I felt it was important that we communicate where your numbers are relative to our second reading. On June 18th, the school board voted unanimously to approve our second reading. This is a budget that, despite reducing by over 1.3 million, we feel will allow us to meet the basic needs of our students while being respectful of the current economic situation. This budget puts the gap between our second reading and the town council first reading at $340,000. Should motion one, the recommendations by the town council finance committee be approved in its entirety tonight, it would make the gap between our second reading and the final budget that goes to referendum $429,000. That's $400,000 plus that we'll need to make up for with further costs, excuse me, cuts to our budget. While I know that finding an additional $400,000 will be challenging, I think that we could find a way to make it work. Our administrators and teachers always do. What we cannot support or endorse are any cuts beyond this. Any motions or amendments that look to make the gap between our second reading and the final vote more than 400,000. Any motions or amendments that reduce more from the school's operating budget to fund municipal changes. It's our plea and our hope that any additions made tonight will be funded by an increase to the mill rate, not a reduction to the school's budget. When we first initiated this process, I believe most councillors were supportive of ending at less than 2 or near 1.5% mill rate. We can achieve that while also not requiring the school to make any more reductions than we already have. I would encourage you to keep this in mind as you consider your vote tonight on motion one and any additional motions. It's our hope that the final vote tonight will be something that both the board and the council can get behind to ensure it passes on July 14th, and we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're still voting in November. Thank you very much.
Hey, Sarah, part of your email also said in the interest of transparency that that $400,000 shortfall includes a $275,000 additional ask for the build, the architecture fee for the new consolidated school. So could you continue that trend of transparency and break that up for us, for the public to hear, please?
Yeah, happy to. I didn't want to get too, too in the weeds, but I'm happy to go into detail.
Well, what, that's, that's.
If you guys want me to, if you guys want me to stay on.
No, I just want you to say. I just want you to say simply that that $430,000 shortfall includes $275,000 that the BOE has added in for an architect for the new consolidated school that you added in immediately before your second reading. That's all I want to make sure that we, since we're all dealing with the same set of facts, and we all want to be transparent, I just want you to inform the public of that.
So I don't necessarily appreciate the tone, but I appreciate the question. And I'm happy to explain. So the original budget, our, our first reading, we had $100,000 in the long-range planning line in our capital budget. And that was to go towards the funding, planning, and design work for a new consolidated school. We found out about a couple days or a week before our first reading that that was incredibly underfunded, and we had miscalculated that. The actual number to fund that project was 375,000. So we had a discussion as a board to keep that as a first reading, and then in further finance committee meetings and board meetings, make a decision on whether or not we wanted to fund the full amount based on where the budget came in and what the directives were from town council. It was at our second reading. So it, it wasn't a, although it was a last minute change in a, it may have seemed like a last minute change in the official budget, it was something that we talked about at probably every finance committee meeting. And so it did go into our second budget. It was, it's our recommendation as a board that we should fund this. The growth in Scarborough continues. The need for the space continues. If we do not do this project now, we will see more portables and expenses for those portables go up around the town. However, we also said in every single one of those meetings that we are not going to fund this project at the expense of programs and jobs. So it was our request that a portion of that be funded out of impact fees, which would not affect operating budgets, nor would it impact the mill rate. It was our understanding from the meeting that you guys have had last week from the finance committee meeting, that there's no desire from the town to fund that out of impact fees or in any other way. So we would, the first action that we would take tomorrow night, if nothing changes, is to reduce that from 375, either back to 100, which it originally was, and we could help move the needle a little bit, or unfund it completely. So you're correct, Paul, that would bring us down, that would still bring, be a gap. It would not be as significant of a gap because we removed that 275, but we would still see a pretty big gap in from where we are to where you guys are.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it. Next is Mr. Humpage or Humbage. I apologize for butchering your name. You just gotta take yourself off mute.
Oh. Can you hear me, Mr. Johnson?
We can, yes. Although you still say you're muted, but you, we can hear you. So that is strange.
Yes, because it's not showing that I'm muted on my computer.
Yeah, okay, you're good, yep.
Good evening. My name is John Humpage. For the record, I live at 8 Williamsburg Lane here in Scarborough. I've listened in on many of the town council meetings, school board meetings, and budgetary workshops to try to understand the situation. And while listening to the last regular school board meeting where they held, then voted on their second reading of the budget, and then in reading the 42 pages of attached documentation to the finance committee and school board, it's become apparent to me that the school system, the school board has made some very tough decisions to reduce the budget, to include reducing headcount, delaying needed maintenance, deferring infrastructure upgrades, programming, et cetera, while doing their best to minimize the impact to the students. The end result is a budget that I can support, and I certainly don't want to see any further cuts, and frankly, to include any cuts to long-range planning for the future needs of our school system. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Newman, you're on deck. Just give me one second here. Okay, Stacy, you're up.
Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Hi, my name is Stacy Newman, and I live at 17 Windsor Pines Drive. I appreciate your consideration of my comments. I am a working mother of three children who next year will be in three different schools here in Scarborough, Blue Point, Wentworth, and Middle School. This year, I am currently on the START Task Force for reopening schools. I am saddened that none, not single one, not one single town council member is part of this task force, or has volunteered to just listen, to hear what is happening boots on the ground. This task force was open to all parents, which some of you are, all community members, which all of you are, and then you, as town councillors, were specifically invited to come today, which you refused, and stated only some of you might attend after you vote on the budget tonight. At that point, the horse is not only out of the barn, but is bolted. You should have considered it your moral duty, let alone a requirement to your office to participate, or at least hear what is going to have to happen next year in the schools. So I'm going to describe a bit of it. The task force, and I'm involved in the academic subcommittee, is running through three different scenarios. Schools five days per week, all distance learning, remote distance learning, and a hybrid model. All are going to require resources next year beyond what is in the budget that you, as town council, have on the table as motion one. And I appreciate that those of you who will vote to underfund the schools at all costs and at every cycle, maybe all of you, will say I'm being hyperbolic, but I can assure you I am not. It is an abdication of your duty to our town to underfund this budget this year with what these children are facing next year during a global pandemic. I'm here to tell you that distance learning was not a success this year, and that is not because the teachers and administrators did not do a Herculean job. They did, and they should not be asked to do more with less in order to get a funded budget passed. But it is because the goal for the eight-plus weeks of distance learning was for these children to maintain their education, that is maintain their education levels at March 15th of 2020. And so while there is a real possibility that students are in some form of distance learning for the better part of the 2019-2020 school year, we cannot have that goal of maintenance repeated. Seniors would be graduating from Scarborough High School with the education level of a second trimester junior. Children entering fourth grade would be at the reading level of a second trimester second grader. And frankly, that is what will happen if you do not put more money into the budget for the changes that will be necessary under any of these scenarios. We need serious changes and improvements, and these improvements will cost money. And this doesn't even begin to cover the cost to keep our children, our teachers, our staffs safe if they are able to go back to school for any portion, which their mental and emotional health demand. A vote to underfund this budget is a vote that abdicates your responsibility to the town, your community. A vote to underfund this budget is a vote that abdicates your responsibility to the town, your community and your children. For what I assume is a claim of fiscal responsibility. But an underfunded school budget during an unprecedented global pandemic is the epitome of fiscal irresponsibility. And anathema to your duties to this town. If this budget comes out as underfunded, and I believe this is motion one, let alone any additional motions for less school budget. I will be voting no on the budget and I'll be fighting tooth and nail for every person in this community to do the same. And I will keep fighting and voting no until you can put forth a budget that gives these children in our community the bare minimum of what they need during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Um, Mr. Lifer, you're up next. Chris, you're on mute. You just have to unmute yourself before you speak.
Right. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Great. All right. Good evening, everyone. Chris Lifer, one hundred point drive. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you all in the town council, as well as the BOE and staff for your service. Especially this year. Um, like another speaker, we also have three children in Scarborough schools. There's been talk in the community about the word compromise and there'll probably be more of that tonight. The problem for school parents is that we've already gone far below the idea of a compromise we can vote for in the proposed school budget. The town council early on before the first reading not only rejected new investments in schools this year, but also rejected having a level services budget. Your directive to the BOE was to make cuts to level services on top of not investing schools. This directive was intended to achieve the annual budget unicorn, which is an arbitrary percentage increase in taxes. Many in town might have missed that in the early part of the budget season, but more understand it now. From your agenda materials, it looks like there's a motion to actually cut even more tonight. That doesn't work for school parents. Please don't pass the second reading with the amendments listed. Rather, please make a motion to bring back level services in the school budget. Forcing students and teachers to work with less next year is exactly the wrong thinking at the worst time. It's an arbitrary move and a politically opportunistic use of the global pandemic that hurts schools. We want level services. We won't vote for anything else. As a town, for our students, we need to look over the valley of COVID nineteen and maintain vibrancy of schools. And we as a town need to commit to fully funding all the costs of COVID nineteen to provide safety at schools. If those costs go higher, we face potential further cuts to services. So I'm begging you, the town council, come back to the table on these items. Make an amendment to restore level services and fully fund COVID nineteen without any quid pro quo. Pledge to fund pandemic costs for schools, no matter its cost. Based on nearby towns' estimates for COVID funding at schools, our estimate is way too low. And COVID funding above the budget should not come from operating budgets, but it should come from reserves. What other time than this should that be utilized? Students and teachers shouldn't have to take one for the team, especially with the pandemic. The budget fight for your percentage increases is an annual challenge. Certain town counselors get anchored on low percentage increases and have a really hard time adjusting from that anchor, even to one percent or God forbid, two for two percent to keep level services and COVID nineteen safety. Based on history, if we have a school budget that passes below level services, it will take years, all capitals, to bring that back. We learned that lesson from the financial crisis of oh eight, oh nine. Schools suffered immeasurable cuts to staffing under a similar call by the town council. We've only barely recovered from those cuts. Level services is really important to our family and to a lot of school parents in town. Please don't make the same mistake with cuts as you did in two thousand eight and nine. Please listen to our voices. My last point. There are many of us who support schools in town who have signs ready to put out to support the budget. They're literally al- already printed, but there's one word missing from that sign after the word vote. It's the word yes or no. As a former speaker said, uh, if this budget goes through tonight as proposed and without the amendments that I've offered for you to consider and put out to another vote in public. It will certainly be a no after those signs. Please don't make us put those signs out. We want to vote for a good school budget. Also, should you not do what I'm asking? You may want to consider putting the Goldilocks back in because there's going to be two camps of vote no's probably on this budget and you're going to want to figure that out why. We'll vote yes for this budget, but we're a long ways from where it's going to get to. And if you go forward with tonight, it's going to be a hard no. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, next I have a public comment from the library. It is, um, the board of trustees acknowledges the challenging work that council and town staff have engaged in as you prepare the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget in this very uncertain economic climate. To be respectful of this difficult decisions being made, we have offered a reduction in our capital improvement project request for the library expansion to continue the planning that has been underway for the two budget cycles. We understand the town manager had originally proposed that our requests be bonded. New guidance from auditors has indicated that our request must be appropriated because the project has not yet been authorized for construction. This causes an unintended increase in the two thousand twenty one tax rate. If the council decides not to include planning funds in the two thousand twenty one appropriation. Perhaps the council will consider a further reduction in the amount sought rather than no appropriation at all. The board of trustees would in turn explore other methods of funding the balance of funds needed to continue the planning process. We intend to review options that are available to us as a nonprofit corporation. This may include private fundraising and loans using the corporate assets as collateral. The library corporation will continue to keep the council informed of our progress. We appreciate the support of your efforts over the last several years and we look forward to your support in the future. With that, uh, Ms. Blaine, you are up.
Can you hear me, Paul?
We can hear you, yep.
Thank you. Uh, Denise Blaine, I live in Buxton. I am a employee of Scarborough High School. Um, where I've been teaching, oh, nineteen years. Um. Tonight I want to speak to how I spent my morning. Um, it was part of the start committee. Um, I am on the subcommittee of operations, um, where we talk about the day to day. How do we get kids back, um, in the building safely, um, efficiently? Um, so they can begin their normal everyday life. Um, as we had those conversations this morning, I probably asked the question. How can we afford this? Five or six times? How can we afford to keep the buses clean? How can we afford the Plexiglas? Can we afford this? Can we afford that? And after the meeting was over. I asked myself, how can we not afford to do this? And why should any teacher and any parent and any school board member have to ask how we can afford to do its best for our students, whether it's COVID or not? I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs of this budget process, but what I do know is that you have a town manager who seems to have worked really hard to make reductions in his budget. And you've had a board who has worked really hard to reduce their budget. I'm saying, listen to your experts and present the budget as it is in front of you, the school board's budget, as they have presented it to you. A couple of weeks ago, you had a town person call up and say, hey, maybe this is the year that the school budget just has to be good enough. Maybe because of COVID, we just have to do just good enough. I'm asking you tonight, as a teacher, as a former resident of Scarborough, I grew up here. My parents still live here. I'm asking you, this budget, put it forward because it's good enough. It's not perfect. I don't like it. Half of you would prefer zero, but it's good enough. And let the town decide what they want to do. You've done the work. Let the town decide. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Uh, Ms. Rowan, you are up next. And Erin, you're going to come in with your video on. I'm going to turn you off real quick. She in here? Just bear with me. She, I think she has an old version of Zoom that makes her get promoted to a panelist. Erin, I'm going to come back to you. I'm going to get somebody else in here. I'm going to come back to you. Uh, Mr. Porter, you are up next.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for listening to my comments tonight. Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
First of all, I want to thank you and the, um, board of education for all your work, um, in managing this budget process. This is an incredibly difficult year, as I know every budget year is. Uh, and this is, um, probably, probably one of the worst ones we've had in many years. Um, everybody's in the same boat in terms of the towns, um, in the state and in the country. We're all facing the same problems, the same budget issues. Um, and I know that your role is to take all that into consideration and to make that those tough choices about balancing between the municipal interest, the school interest and the taxpayers' interests and making sure we have a budget that works. And that's a tall order for you to do and I respect that. Um, in the past, you know, I have two children, Jeff Porter, seven Cumberlun Way. I forgot to say my address, but I have two children in the school district. And over the years, um, there's been just a lot of cuts in the budget um, that have affected my kids and I know their friends and their classmates. Um, wo- world languages have been cut in the past, allied arts programs, sports programs, class sizes have gone up. You know, all these things will happen in one fiscal year and then there'll be a restoration for a year or two. And then there'll be other considerations for reductions two or three years later. And it's been a lot of bing bonging back and forth over the years in relation to the school districts. Um, proposed budget that goes forward in the town council votes on it. It's very difficult to watch your children or other people's children in the school system, um, suffer from program cuts, um, class sizes going up. Um, and to see that and then see those things get restored and then to be on the chopping block once again. One of the things I'm very concerned about, um, and I do support the school board's budget in front of you, although I do think it's too low. Uh, my, my, uh, recommendation would be go back to the two percent that you had originally given them uh, to go by. And the reason being is that there's a lot of stuff we don't know yet about COVID nineteen. The estimates for COVID nineteen, um, personal protection equipment, PPE, um, such as face masks, face shields. Um, having to reconfigure, uh, spaces in schools, looking at Plexiglas, having to reconfigure bathrooms so that there's not manual bathrooms. Uh, there's a lot of things that still are not known, um, as the summer begins. I don't believe that the estimates for COVID nineteen in the school district's budget will be enough. And I think that's the case for many school districts in Maine are starting to figure this out. The other piece that's looming are potential state subsidy cuts on the revenue side. That will have an impact on the expenditure side as it always does. Those cuts could come at the end of the summer. They could come halfway through the year. Who knows? Maybe there won't be any cuts, but at this point, given the state's, um, revenue picture and forecast for, for the next twelve months, it is not looking good. There is a huge drop in the state revenue and that will affect school district revenue as well as I'm sure municipal sharing, uh, with the state. If that happens, that will lead to program cuts in the schools. It will have to in order to not have a shortfall in the school district budget. Again, it may not be at the beginning of the year, but it might be later in the year. So the kids are already behind. They've been out of school. They were out of school for three and a half months and they're already behind. As much as I believe the teachers did a great job trying to get kids up to speed through an unprecedented time and having to learn a new platform, new program. Um, kids are coming in next year already behind and who knows how school is going to start. There's three major ways to start school. One is to have all kids in. If all kids are in, you still have to have a lot of safety pieces in place. It doesn't mean everything is good to go. That costs a lot of money. The second one is having kids in part of the time and not in the rest of the time. That costs a lot of money. And the third one is if the kids are virtual a hundred percent, that costs a lot of money because supporting kids virtually is very expensive, as we've learned over the last three and a half months. So we already have kids behind. We have a potential state curtailment that I think is coming, even though the state is not indicating that yet. They won't until later. There's different scenarios that the school is going to have to, the schools are going to have to start on. And the, the personal protective equipment and all of the mitigations that we will need to be in line with CDC are not yet known. And so I believe this, this budget, even though I do support the board of education, um, in, in trying to meet, uh, the mandate, I think it's just too low. So if anything else, it should be increased tonight and not, um, at the level that is before you. Um, the other comment I just wanted to make is that I know that, and I do applaud the effort of the school and the town to work together over the past few years, the one town. One budget, I think, um, I think it was a good, a good move to put that forward. And at that time, I think it was something that needed to be done. Just from a, a citizen and taxpayer's perspective, I think it's confusing. Um, and I think it, it almost feels like it should go back to the, you know, I say, dare say the old way of having the school district, uh, present the budget and then going back and forth, um, with the council. I think it might be more effective in the past to actually return to that model. And part of it is that there is a lot of confusion that goes back and forth, um, that doesn't get reflected necessarily on either the school or the town side in a way that we can digest that information. Um, and so that's just feedback for you as you're, as you're moving forward. I think it was an admirable move a few years ago, but I don't really think it works for the typical you know, citizen like myself, trying to kind of make sense of all the numbers going back and forth. I actually think it just is more effective for the school to advocate for what it needs, the council to advocate for what it needs and kind of marry that. And I know at the end of the day. You have to still work together to make that work. Um, but I would just, um, ask you to maybe think about it again. Um, and I'd just like to echo the sentiment of a couple of other parents that, you know, I think there are a lot of parents, um, watching tonight, lots. I mean, we're all taxpayers in this town too. We're watching and you know, just the, the fact that if the budget is too low for our kids. Um, I think there's going to be a no vote on the budget and it doesn't necessarily reflect anything that um, anyone has done. It just means that we're advocating. I would hope that people would understand we're advocating for an increase in the budget for the schools. Uh, for next year. But again, thank you very much for your time, your patience. I know this is a lot of work. And I appreciate and respect, um, the position you're in tonight. Thank you for everything you do.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Mr. Owen, I'm going to try one more time with you. If you can hear me, it's saying, there you go. Perfect. Hold on. Yep, you're good.
Okay, um, so I'm sorry, did I miss the general public comments tonight?
It's a special town council meeting. There's no general public comments. It's not a, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, okay. Great. Um, so Erin Rowan, Bonnie Grove Drive. In light of discussions around fairness between the town side and the school side, I'd like to give a gentle reminder that we are one town with one budget. The town budget has many moving parts, but the debate shouldn't be you versus me. It's meant to be about us and we. Some believe a fair budget can only be one in which all parties suffer equally. But that idea misrepresents the nature of the budgets under your purview. Within the municipal budget are more natural opportunities for efficiencies, as well as more possibilities for raising revenues. The school budget is much less flexible for good reason, and it isn't intended to be a revenue generator. And as a minimum receiver, Scarborough must look to taxpayers for the majority of our funding needs. No amount of brow furrowing or magical thinking will result, will result in decreases that won't have an impact on students and teachers. I've spent too many hours over too many days gathering data and running numbers and frankly, nothing about this budget seems fair. Hopefully your debates this evening will help to clear things up for me. I'm also struggling with requests for worker concessions. I'm not sure how many of these workers live in Scarborough, but given the lack of affordable housing stock here. Asking them to shoulder between one and two thousand dollars of the burden each makes me really uncomfortable. In an attempt to wrap my mind around these requests, I wrote a little story about Joe. Joe makes fifty thousand a year working in dispatch. Since he took one for the team, he'll make a thousand dollars less this year. With the increased homestead exemption, exemption, Joe will pay seventy three fifty less this year if we keep the mill rate flat. And forty three twenty nine less if we increase it by one point one six percent. Sounds pretty good for Joe until you remember that he gave up a thousand dollars to achieve these mill rate targets. For the mill rate increase of two percent, Joe For the mill rate increase of 2%, Joe would have paid $21.97 less than last year, and he would also have an extra $1,000 in his pocket. I'm no math whiz, but I think Joe got a raw deal when he agreed to concessions. Please understand that when you ask for 0% because people can't afford an increase this year, you're not only asking Joe and his fellow first responders to lose $1,000 so that you can save about $73.50 on your own tax bill, you're asking around 400 schoolteachers who went without a contract and any pay increase for 18 months, and who will continue to make much less than colleagues in comparable districts to concede even more. By my math, that increase in personal sacrifice on their part results in significantly less fairness overall in a year in which the need for their professional skills will be greater than ever. Are we forgetting that each and every one of these workers are people, too? At 2%, workers could keep their colas, teachers could preserve their new contract, we could maintain additional public services, and keep students safe at schools while their parents return to work. With this increase, my family would be, would be out an additional $50, and the seven members of the town council would contribute an extra $604.96 cumulatively. But since most of us are above Scarborough's median income, I think we're all in a better position to take this hit than Joe. Councilors seeking additional cuts could give up their stipends, a cumulative $10,750. And if they also give up their own homestead exemptions, they can save the town a total of $13,373.25. Their show of solidarity would amount to almost as much as the sacrifice offered by 14 dispatch officers, and that's some symbolism I could get behind. Regardless of whether counselors take on personal sacrifice or just keep asking others to do so, budget fairness can't be assessed using simple addition or subtraction in a ledger sheet. Instead of looking at fairness between the town side and the school side by comparing how much each has been forced to bleed. If we want to achieve true fairness, we need to evaluate the real impact of the sacrifices we are asking each to make. Who are the winners and losers at 2%? Who are the winners and losers at 1.16% or even 0%? Is the true need even higher than 2%? How can we put our hands on actual data and set aside long-held and harmful biases? And most importantly, how can we best meet our obligations as stewards of the common good? Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Ms. Blaisdell, you're up next. Bear with me for one second. Aaron, I'm going to kick you out. I might remove you from the meeting entirely. I apologize. It's just because you can, from order to a parent panelist. Ms. Blaisdell, you are up.
Can you hear me?
You can, yep.
Sarah Blaisdell, Five Farmhouse Road. I appreciate all of your time and effort serving our town, especially during this budget season. I appreciate your desire to be responsible and keep the tax rate increase down at this time of crisis for your citizens. However, while serving on the Restart Task Force Committee, I, like others, have begun to realize how much more money the schools will need based on the Department of Education guidelines and CDC guidelines for reopening. And I'm concerned that you're now being irresponsible with our youngest citizens, my children, and urge you to add more money into the budget for our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Either Ms. or Mr. Goodman is up next.
Good evening. My name's John Goodman. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, yep.
All right. I live at Two Barnswallow, Two Barnswallow Court. My wife, Janelle, and I have a son who's going to be a freshman this year and a daughter who's going to be a senior. We moved to Scarborough about 11 years ago, really because of the reputation of the schools. That was the, the biggest thing that drew us to this community. And what's been sort of shocking and disappointing year after year is seeing how we have to fight tooth and nail. I think one of the other parents used this expression, fight tooth and nail to get a good school budget. And it's, it's really disappointing, and I, I want to advocate generally for what everybody else I've heard so far says. Specifically, I've heard a couple of folks advocating for going back to a 2% budget, and I would strongly support that. I know my neighbors would strongly support that. And I'm more than happy to pay a little bit more taxes to make sure that our kids get a good school generally and specifically with respect to COVID, that, that money is really needed now to make sure that, that we do things right moving forward. Thank you for your work on this, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sarah. Ms. Hamel, you are up next.
Hi, Susan Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but this conversation so far has been so lopsided that I, I just wanted to remind the council that yes, there are many of us out here who want a, a level tax rate. And I'm here to speak for those who aren't speaking and the silent majority. And I also, I'd like to just say that I did put, we did live in Scarborough and put four kids through the schools, and now we're retired. So now we're part of a, I guess, a different cohort. And I want to remind parents out there that you think that some, that, you know, this is your life right now, and I get that. But you will eventually be retired, and I hope that you can continue to live in Scarborough, which I've been really lucky that I can. Every person before me has spoken in favor of more dollars for the schools. Many people have used phrases about the fact that Scarborough continues to underfund the schools. It's fiscally irresponsible. How can we not afford? Dealing with COVID is going to be expensive, and we have a duty to our town to fund the schools. But I want to remind the council that this is a very diverse community. There are, you know, we're not all parents of school-aged kids, and we're not all wealthy. Please consider all the community as you consider the budget. We really are all in this together, and I hope that, I really hope that we will see a budget that we all can support. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Ms. Shay, you are up next.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Perfect. I actually wasn't going to speak tonight. I've been emailing the council, as you all know, and have had most of my questions answered, and I feel like the previous callers have actually spoke to many of the things that are still outstanding in my mind. But as I watched the counselors checking their phone or logging off to eat dinner, I felt compelled to speak up and say, this is still a town meeting, and there are norms for us, so there are also norms for you. So please, going forward, think about that as you're hosting a meeting. This isn't a typical budget fight. We are in times where there's real concern about citizens' safety and, and health, and not just the adults in our town, but the kids that don't have a voice. And so I think the majority of people that have spoke before me understand that and realize that if we take a step back and stop talking about mill rate and percentages and tax increase, and we start talking about what do we need in a time of a pandemic? And how do we get our kids back to school safely? Which then ultimately means that their parents can go back to work, which ultimately means that the economy can get back on track. So stop thinking about the very small minority of people who are demanding a 0% and start thinking about the citizens of your town who don't get a chance to vote. I would ask that you listen to the people that have spoke and not tune them out just because they have a different viewpoint than you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Okay, that is it. So I'm going to pause like usual. There are 61 people in attendance, so I'm going to pause to see if there's anybody else. I'm checking my email to see if there's any public comment through email. Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. So we do need to put the, essentially, the budget that was at first reading on the floor. So I'll say it one more time because I flubbed it up the first time. Order number 20040 is the second reading on the proposed FY 2021 municipal school budget as amended at first reading on May 6, 2020. So we need to put this on the floor before we discuss any amendments. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, and with that, I think I'm going to limit discussion because I believe there's a finance committee recommendation for amendments. Mr. Hall, did you have something to say?
Would it be helpful for me just to provide a few minutes of context, what brings us to this point?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. And I'll accept the amendment afterwards. Yep.
Just very quickly, since first reading, the finance committee has really taken on the task. They've met weekly. It seems almost more than weekly, but I think there's been a total of five meetings. I really credit their steadfast attention. I think each of those meetings has gone more than two hours, and so there's a, quite a commitment that's been given over the last several weeks. The motions that are prepared this evening, the first one is the culmination of their efforts, and it's really an omnibus motion that has multiple parts. The meeting agenda packet had, I think, a fair amount of the detail that sits behind that motion. And I'll just remind you, this has worked well in the past. It's customary for the first motion to be recognized as that of the finance committee, given their stature in this process and the work that they've undertaken. And I highly recommend you do that. Beyond that, I appreciate that counselors did respond to me and the council chair with their interest in offering potential further amendments, and I was able to work with those counselors to prepare those. And that's been provided to the council. It remains to be seen whether those motions are offered as they're currently drafted or they're modified beyond that. Ruth and I are here. We'll do our best to assist you to the extent we can. I do recommend we try to state a script. And I say that with a bit of a grin on my face. I've been through this enough to know that it doesn't take much to get off the rails. But if we can start with motion one, I think that would be, get us, you know, 95% of the way there, so to speak. Just finally, just a couple of comments through the, the travels since the time the superintendent and myself presented this budget. The budget has been adjusted downward by over $3.1 million. And so the net, net budget started at 5.8% increase, and at this point, assuming the finance committee motions pass, it's at 1.3%. So I just, I want us all to appreciate the Herculean, Herculean effort to get to this point. And it has been cooperative with our colleagues on the school. And contrary to much of the comment we've received tonight, and we've seen a lot of email, from my assessment, you know, this budget does accomplish a number of key things. You know, we have been successful in, I'll say, minimizing the, the amount of layoffs in the town and the school side at this point, to my knowledge, are very few, just a handful, frankly. And a lot of the creative strategies that we've both employed had that very goal in mind, and I'm pleased and proud of the fact that we're at this point. And, and I'm able to say confidently that we've been able to preserve positions. And on the school side, to my knowledge, sports and extracurricular activities have been restored. We have nearly funded within $20,000, I believe, of what the Board of Education has asked for, for COVID funding or pandemic relief. I don't have an estimate or a knowledge as to whether that amount is sufficient, but contrary to what, some of what we've heard tonight and through email, funding is provided based on the amount that has been asked for. And also, there's some partial money to, to advance the school planning effort, and I appreciate more has been asked for. But it's worth noting that there is, there are funds to advance that work further. I guess the last thing I just want to say in a personal note, you know, I have some regrets through this process, too. We've had to decimate our capital plan and program, and I know the school in the end has done much the same work. And that's something that I think we're going to have to pick up the pieces in, in the future years on. But given the circumstances, that seemed like a likely target, if you will. I've also had to lean heavily on staff, both our unionized staff and our non-union staff, and that's not an easy, easy thing to do. But again, the goal was to main positions, and I think we all appreciated that, that effort is worth it. So that's just, I guess, a couple of comments at the top. I appreciate you allowing me the time to, to offer those.
Thanks, Tom. Peter, I'm going to let you, as you do the motion, I'm just going to project on the screen the tax comp sheet, just so everybody knows where we are after your motion. So I'll, I'll let you read the motion, and while you're reading it, I will share a little bit of the nitty gritty. I know it's a little hard to follow along at home, so this, this would be after the motion that Peter is about to, excuse me, the amendment that Peter is about to bring to the table. So with that, Peter, do you, would you, is there an amendment on the floor here?
Yes. I moved to approve the amend the main motion, approve the finance committee's recommended adjustments of reducing the net town operating budget by $229,637 and increasing the net education operating budget by $313,170 and reducing the school capital budget by $398.556, resulting in a total net budget reduction of $376,653 for a total new net budget of $69,937,873.
Thanks, Peter. I just take a second. I just kind of highlighted the, the tall part of this tax comp sheet is pretty much the highlights of what, of what you're bringing forth here. So with that, is there a second of Peter's amendment?
Second.
Okay, now we're just going to discuss the amendment proposed by the finance committee, and then any further amendments will be after this. So is there any discussion on the amendment that Peter and the finance committee just brought forth? Counselor Clucci?
Yeah, I think there's a, a few points with this amendment that are worth bringing to the public's attention. A lot of it is the result of Tom's work to meet our council objective of arriving at about 1.16%. But there were some things that I wasn't necessarily attuned to the details that I wanted to at least call out. It does include reducing daytime firefighter coverage at Pleasant Hill in an amount of 84,000. It also includes removing from the budget funding for the senior property tax relief program that we had included at first reading. And that's also something that I, I don't necessarily support. So some of these components get us to a number, but I feel at the expense of some things that are, are pretty important. So the, the initial motion or recommendation from Tom did pass finance unanimously, but there were some amendments that were made afterwards that were not unanimous from the committee. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Thanks, John. Any other comments on this amendment of where, what Peter's putting forth? Jean Marie?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to the public that I know I was one person who would, who would have been very happy with a 2% increase to the budget. I could have voted for that. However, I'm not the only person on this council. We have seven members of the council. We represent the whole town. We hear from everyone in town. I think the finance committee did a yeoman's job in trying to come up with a budget that tries to meet the needs of everyone. This has been the worst year for many reasons, not the least of which is this pandemic that all of a sudden got dumped on us in, in March. And we've had to rethink everything, just everything. The fact that we're able to even put together a budget that, to me, makes sense, I'm not thrilled with every part of it, but it does make sense in this amount of time is just, it's, to me, it's unbelievable, having served on five previous years of the council. So I, I hope that people take into consideration that we don't just come up with these things waving a magic wand and makes everything work. I know this is, a lot of people think this is a trite statement to make, but I'm going to make it anyway. No one's particularly happy with the budget, which tells me that we're probably in the place we need to be at the moment. And people need to understand that in this situation, we're not going to get everything. But we certainly are working hard to do the best we can. But we certainly are working hard to do the best we can. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thanks. Discussion on the amendment, discussion on the finance committee, Mr. Hamel?
That's good. Peter, please just confirm again what mill rate percentage increase the motion that before would represent. Thank you.
I think it gets to one point zero nine. Is that correct? You've got the sheet there, Chair, right?
Yeah, I can scroll down here. Bear with me.
I think it's one point, one point zero nine.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, I did not show the bottom. This is the, this is the mill rate suggestion.
And again, I mean, it is worth pointing out, if you look at what the number was last year versus what it is, the total request, there is more money in the budget this year than than last year. You know, sixty-nine million last year. Now it's almost seventy million. So there is additional funds going into the budget.
Counselor Gleistin?
Yep, I'm not muted. Well, I, I'm, would like to say I'm very proud of the people of Scarborough. And through this whole process, I'm very impressed by the number of people who have spoken out articulately and passionately. This is Scarborough. This is how we do it. This is why we make the news. If, if, if you're not really into local government, it, it, it may come as a challenge to you to be a member of our community. But I think it's exciting. I think it's government at its best. I am, people are not going to agree with everything I say tonight or with all of my votes. But I highly respect the people who have taken the opportunity to write in. I apologize that I haven't been able to answer everyone to date. I still plan to try to get back to everyone even after the vote. And your, your voices are very important, and your time and attention is just second to none. And I'm proud of the people who are representing us on both the school board and and council. And I think ultimately, the people of Scarborough will vote on this, and we'll see where it stands. But I think we have a lot to be proud of also with how hard the staff have worked during this extraordinary time. Not only has this budget been put together, but at the same time, we were furloughing at Town Hall, the school was doing extraordinary measures to continue with remote learning. I think we have seen a huge challenge. We have met it at every level in this town. No, we do not always agree, but we have, we have stood up and shown who we are and what we are as a town. And I'm, I'm very proud of our town, and I'm proud of the people of our town, even though we don't always agree. And as I've said many times this year, you know, the current economic crisis for us as a town is really all about the non-property tax revenue. Because that's a major portion of our funding. That's how we fund a big portion of our schools, although, as we all know, most other towns get much more, a much higher percentage and much more money. This is one of the reasons we are led in Scarborough to have so much discussion around school budgets. But we do still get a significant portion of our budget funded through non-tax revenue. So throughout the comments, there was a lot of talk about an initial two percent budget target that's reached. But since that reading, the council has further reduced revenue estimates. We are still estimating that we will receive more revenue, non-tax, non-property tax revenue this year than last year. So this isn't something that we're using as a weapon or a way to cut the budget. It is, we don't have a crystal ball, but we've done our due diligence, due diligence with some of the revenue estimates. We've tried not to make them too low, and we've tried not to make them too high. But it's important to understand that since that first reading, a lot of those adjustments had to be made. And that one hundred percent beyond a shadow of a doubt impacts the bottom line mill rate. And so people need to understand how that mill rate works. The non-property tax revenue is a huge factor in that mill rate, and since that first reading, we have continued to look at that. I think it's also important to understand that the school budget has increased year over year. And it's more than three percent. The typical three percent tax increase that we are kind of used to has not been achieved with a three percent increase in spending. And indeed, our spending on both town and schools has gone up more than three percent. So how is it that we get to a three percent tax rate? Well, again, it's that non-tax, non-property tax revenue that has increased as our town has grown. That was expected to increase a lot more this year based on some things the legislature done, has done. We've had to scale that back some. But we also borrow money for things like maintenance, not just new schools and things like that. And so you know, that's one strategy. We kind of say we're going to live at a certain tax rate now in Scarborough and, you know, because of borrowing and competitive rates, you know, we're passing on some of the things that we're building now as a community to future taxpayers. That is an option, and that's something we do. But I think sometimes people think because they only see a three percent mill rate increase that we haven't been increasing spending in town or schools, and that's just not true. I do plan to make a further amendment to this motion. But I really wanted to take the time to say thank you to everyone in town who has paid a lot of attention to this. Thank you for the dialogue. And I really am proud of our town.
Thank you. Any others? No? Okay. The other thing I'll say, I'll just state where we are for everybody at home and everybody listening. The municipal budget after this will have a gross increase of point seven percent. The municipal budget after this will have a net decrease of one point one percent. The education budget after this will have a gross increase of two point eight percent. The educational net budget after this will have a net increase of one point two percent. Separate and independently of that, there'll be five hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars available for pandemic funding. So with that, Tony, could you call the vote on the amendment only, please?
So Pucci?
No.
Also Hayes?
Counselor Hayes, on mute. Yes.
So Gleistin?
Yes.
Counselor Caterina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to seven, oh, seven, six to one, sorry.
Thirteen-person council.
Sorry.
That just add, add to the fun, right? So now the main motion is successfully amended with one amendment. There is another amendment. Betsy, if you just bear with me, I actually probably want to pull this one on the screen as you say it, if you don't mind.
Uh, no, well, I I think it might get a little confusing if you do that. I think I can, I think I
Okay, with that, is there another motion to amend? Counselor Gleistin?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I would like to move approval to amend the main motion as amended to add a hundred and twenty thousand to the town operating budget for the purpose of funding a two point five percent COLA for all town part-time and full-time non-union staff effective starting January first, two thousand twenty-one, which will result in approximately one point two five percent COLA increase overall for non-union staff. This will result in a new net town operating budget of nineteen million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-four. And I am proposing to reduce the education operating budget by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a new net education operating budget of forty-seven million, six hundred eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six, resulting in a resulting in no change to the net budget as amended in the previous motion.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Now, before we discuss discussion, Betsy, you have changed what I have in front of me. So to be very clear, Betsy has made a motion to reduce the net operating budget by a one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay for this. Is that correct, Betsy, just for everybody?
That's correct.
Okay. I know that there were some other options to fund it. So I think what we'll do is, I'm going to, before we, if there's other amendments to be offered to Betsy's, let's wait on those and just discuss where we are with this. And then if it makes sense to offer, obviously, we have to vote on Betsy's amendment, but if it makes sense to offer another one, we will. Counselor Caterina?
Um, I support the first part of this, which is to reinstitute or or institute a two point five percent COLA. But I absolutely oppose reducing the education operating budget in order to achieve this. I prefer to put it onto the tax rate. Just where I'm coming from with this. I know there's been some hard feelings between the council and the school board, and I'm one of the counselors who's been pulling my hair out with, it seems like the goalposts keep getting moved. Very frustrated that the three hundred and seventy-five thousand for a study for an elementary school that is like I, I mean, the communication around that was nonexistent as far as I was concerned. This is way pre-COVID. But that being said, I'm not interested in playing tit for tat with this. I think we've done what we're going to do. So I would, I do support doing the two point five percent COLA. I do not support taking out of the school operating budget.
Okay, Counselor Gleistin, you want to respond? And then I'll move on to somebody else?
Yes, I appreciate those comments by Counselor Caterina. Since I made the motion, I wanted to offer a few explanations. You know, our employees for both schools in our town, they're our greatest asset and our greatest resource, the key to our great town services and schools. And they are also our greatest expense. Step and COLA increases each year are critical factors in attracting and retaining excellent employees, but they're also major budget drivers. In a normal year, this is expected and desirable to ensure we maintain a top-notch workforce, but this is not a normal year. In the greater Portland area, employment stands at over ten percent. Many in our community have had their pay and benefits reduced, if not laid off altogether. Estimated sales tax recent year-to-date through just April in the area are down thirty-six million. We've seen several businesses closure so far in the area, and sadly, we're likely not out of the woods so far. In the face of the economic impact from the pandemic, municipal unions reached out and offered to reduce their COLA increases. On top of that, the town manager offered no COLA at all for non-union employees. Why did they do this? Because they knew it saves services and it saves positions. If everyone gives a little, everyone benefits. The town council passed a resolution seven oh, asking school employees to give a little for FY twenty-one to save services and positions. But so far, this has not happened. And as this process went forward with some employees giving up their COLA increase, some of their COLA increases, some giving up all and some doing a moderate amount, I became very concerned about the equity of this. As town counselors, we're only left with one blunt tool, and that's the bottom line. Anyone who thinks that we do this out of any other reason other than trying to make this fair and make a budget that everyone can live with, anyone who thinks that we've not lost sleep over this, you know, is very wrong. So I felt tonight compelled to bring forward a COLA restoration to non-union employees, which will result in about a one point two for two-five percent COLA increase for non-union employees along with the town union employees. I am calling on the school employees to help cover this cost or their fellow municipal employees by giving a little, a few moderate concessions to cover this. I don't want to see a reduction of staff or programming at all. As a counselor, I feel I must be concerned about all employees, and I'm asking school employees to share this burden in this extraordinary year. The choice is yours. No doubt, there are many good reasons why you may choose not to do this, and I respect those reasons. But please understand that this is your choice, and I think the people of Scarborough deserve to know this.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes. Could we please ask Counselor Gleistin to confirm what mill rate increase would be associated with the amendment that she has just explained?
None from the main motion that we passed. It'll be flat because it's taking from one bucket and putting it to another bucket. It's one point oh nine percent.
Thank you. Thanks.
So yeah, again, this, this, this would take the one twenty to add to the COLA for the town side and reduce the the school operating budget by the same amount. Counselor Clucci and then Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I actually appreciate you bringing this forward, Counselor Gleistin. I think the first part is spot on in that there's an inequity on the municipal side. Where non-union staff are taking a bigger hit than than the rest of the staff. So I fully support reinstating COLA as you propose. What I don't support is taking that from the education operating budget. I feel like we've, we've pillaged that enough. And I understand that there's some frustration. I've had some frustration as well. We haven't had a very good communication process. I think Mr. Porter touched on that pretty well. Where, you know, the school board is working down one path, and we're working down a separate and distinct path. And there weren't very good touch points this time. So we were in a situation where, you know, they passed second reading, we had a finance committee meeting the next day, and we had to kind of make up our own decisions because there was that much of a disconnect between what the two bodies were working on. That having been said, I think we need to have a little empathy, right? So they're looking at different problems than we are. What the school department is trying to figure out is how we're going to open, get kids back into school. And honestly, a large part of our focus, probably to our, to a fault, has been how do we get the tax rate as low as possible without, you know, crushing things. So I, I, I think they're doing their job. We were trying to do our job, but there was a disconnect. I think this is somewhat vindictive, just going, you know, trying to take another hundred and twenty thousand out of the education operating budget. It's just not something that a piece of it that I would support, but I do support the first, the first half.
Thank you. I'm going to, Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, I mean, I think similarly, I absolutely support making equity among all the town employees and doing a similar thing, which I think is exactly what was brought forth by Counselor Gleistin. I, I do think that the the school should share in part of that. All town employees at this point are making COLA concessions. I think there is some equity that there needs to be, you know, a similar effort on the other side. So I do support sharing the cost with the Board of Education, but I will be, I'm open to the dialogue that will evolve from the rest of the discussions and possible motions that are coming.
Counselor Johnson? I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson, you didn't have your hand raised. I'm sorry. Counselor Hamel?
Yes, I am in support of this. I think at some level, it does try to strive in the direction of equalizing the effort and the contributions and the sacrifices. You know, to be honest, you know, I, there have been late-minute calls and last-minute communications from the school about their confirming their, their willingness and the fact that they've already begun discussions with you know, with their frontline people on the same topic. So I appreciate the spirit of that, but through, frankly, throughout the whole process, we've been trying to ask for that and trying to see some, some reciprocity. And I've listened to everybody, believe me. I, all the folks that were speaking tonight, and many of them have been sending emails as well. I, I admit, I can't comprehend the challenges that parents are facing at home right now. Yet at the same time, I think our toughest challenges are ahead of us, and I think that that, in my mind, argues in favor of trying to be cautious and careful and so that we can prepare for the next wave of difficulty that we will inevitably face. So I, I'm in support of this, and, and I hope that the Board of Ed and the school folks will be able to, you know, work through those issues. And I think there is room in their, in their operating budget and also in their capital plan. But I, I'm not in the business of telling them specifically, you know, what to do and where to take the money from and how to fund it.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Johnson and then Counselor Gleistin?
Yeah, I mean, I do support level setting the COLA.
Yeah, I I mean, I do support level setting the COLA. I think that's only fair. I do not support pushing the full offset to the to the school side. That's uh, I don't agree with that. I I I would be open for a discussion on shared costs, maybe a sixty forty, like the budget's supposed to be split, but I'm not, I'm not, I can't support the the full push-off cost of the s- to the school.
And I can't as well, so I don't know if you want to withdraw your motion, Betsy, or do you want to try to defend it? And I vote on it, it's up to you. Or we could, go ahead.
Can I make a motion that we split the item into the?
Yeah, yeah, I guess you could withdraw, and you can make a different amendment, or we can amend hers. I just thought, go ahead, Counselor Gleistine, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I would like to hear from Counselor uh Clucci what he wants to say, but since um I I don't think he probably meant this this way, but I did want to answer since this was my motion. You know, in in no way, shape, form, or fashion for me is this vindictive. Um, it has, it has nothing to do with that whatsoever. It's gut-wrenching. Uh, but, you know, I think I've been pretty strongly uh consistent that I think that um school employees should take some very moderate concessions in this financial year as a med- as a as goodwill towards the people of Scarborough. At the same way that the folks in the town have taken some moderate concessions. These are not cuts. These are slight reductions in COLA increases only. People still get step increases. There are still raises in, there are still uh promotions. Um, this is uh proposed uh modest reductions in COLAs at a time when a lot of people will have no income at all. People are taking eighty percent of their pay. People are losing their 401Ks. So um, I've been very consistent on you know, that I think the school employees really should step up to the plate and do this. I sponsored the resolution, co-sponsored this resolution. Um, I don't think I was vindictive then, and I'm not vindictive now. I don't want to see any programs cut. I don't want to see staff cut. But the reality is, if peo- everyone does a little, we can, we don't have to cut staff. We don't have to cut services. Uh, in a a large budget where eighty percent of your funding is based on um employees, if everyone does a little, gives up a little, not a cut, but a little bit of a reduction, then uh that works. That's gonna be something that everyone can get behind, I think.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Gleistine, do you want to put your amendment to the vote and then just and then have let Clucci offer up a different one if he wants, or?
Did you want to do Counselor Clucci? Did, did you want to amend?
I I was gonna motion to split this item into two pieces. It seemed like we were unanimous unanimous in our support for adding the COLA back in for the town. Where we uh kind of differed was how we fund that. I I thought it might be cleaner to break it into two pieces. Uh, and I I I'd be happy to offer that motion to split this into the uh the two components and and vote on each separately.
I would support that.
I I feel like the funding mechanism might might actually, actually, I think it might be a chicken or egg thing. I think I, I think it might be better to to talk about the funding mechanism first, because perhaps I perhaps we wouldn't support the one-twenty if we don't like the way it's funded.
I think that's okay. I I don't think it matters which which one goes first.
So this is what I think the best thing to do is. Betsy, for clarity's sake, I'm gonna put your amendment to a vote. And then I I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take somebody else's amendment, okay? So, Tony, can you call the vote on Betsy's amendment, please?
Counselor Clucci?
No.
Counselor Hayes? I'm sorry?
You're mute, Counsel.
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine? Yes. Counselor Caterina?
No.
Counsel, Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
And Chairman Johnson?
No. Would somebody like to offer up a separate amendment before we, since that relates to the COLA? Mr. Clucci, do you want to offer up something? I feel like you have something in your head. You want to offer it up?
I'd love to offer one. I I I guess I'll just read from the original motion that uh move approval of the main motion as amended to add a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the town operating budget for the purpose of funding the two-and-a-half percent COLA for all town, part-time and full-time non-union staff effective January one twenty twenty-one for a new net town operating budget of nineteen thou- uh nineteen million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay, all right. I I see what you did there.
I read the first half.
Okay, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So we're just voting on, are we increasing the COLA?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the question, are we in- increasing the COLA?
If I could, my my interpretation of that is that if there's no dedicated funding source, then that would be done through taxation.
Yes.
Okay.
That that part wasn't clear, so I think that's really important. But we're saying if we vote yes, that it's all on the municipal side.
Okay, so we are essentially discussing right now, are we going to fund this by passing all of it to the taxpayer? Counselor Ham?
Yeah, unequivocally, no. I am not in favor of just shifting this from one side to the other. Absolutely not.
Thank you, sir. Counselor, anybody else? Sorry. Counselor Caterina?
And I'm gonna offset uh Counselor Hamel and say unequivocally, yes. Um, I think that we should be shifting it over there. It's not that much, and uh doesn't make that huge of a hit on the uh tax rate.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yeah, and I'm going to stand firm, asking the school employees for some moderate uh COLA concessions um as a gesture of goodwill, so we can come together uh as a town.
Thank you, Counselor Clucci.
I I just like that. I I know that there's a focus on trying to get concessions from the teachers, and I I wanted to clarify that I and I've actually spoken uh to them, that they have expressed an openness to work and do what's needed to try to get through this year. But I think the part of the equation that a lot of people are missing is that the five hundred and some odd thousand that was requested for pandemic relief is most likely insufficient. And there may be other funding sources and other other pieces, pieces that are moving, but I think their anticipation is that they're gonna give it up for that. And uh, yeah, so doing it now is kind of that will probably result in something similar like happening twice, because that funding is still gonna wind up falling short. Um, so that's, that's a a part of my rationale for I for let's just fund this and try to bring everybody to equity. Uh, and I think what's gonna happen on the school side will take care of itself over the coming months.
Okay, just for reference, if we did pass this straight to the taxpayer, that is looking towards a uh new mill rate of fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, and it's a one point two-nine increase, percent increase to the mill rate. Just for reference for everybody. So I'll say it again, just because I know it's weird when you're not looking at it. If we did pass this, that would bring the current, the mill rate to fourteen point eight-nine, fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, excuse me, and an increase of one uh one point two-nine percent over last year. Any more comments on the motion to pass to the taxpayer? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I know this is a bit of a seesaw, and this is my least favorite part of the budget process, what I call final jeopardy. I mean, I hate this round. And uh, I know we're not done with it yet. We're not halfway through. But I I, you know, we're, y- you can see the yin and yang that we have here, that we've been dealing with this the whole time, and we'll be dealing with it consistently. I believe there is a middle path here, but I I'm not gonna support the 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 motion as it stands now from, with all due respect to my good friend and colleague, uh, Counselor Clucci.
I for one love Final Jeopardy. Uh, so with that, Tony, could you call the vote on this, please?
Counselor Clucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
No.
Counselor Gleistine?
No.
Counselor Caterina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Hamel?
No.
And Chairman Johnson?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you.
Is there a third motion? I'm gonna, can I make one? Is that okay?
Oh.
Okay. I am going to bring forth a move approval to amend the main motion as amended to add a hundred and twenty thousand to the town operating budget for the proposed funding of a two-point-five percent COLA for the town, part-time and full-time non-union staff, effective January one twenty twenty-one for a new net operating budget for the town of nineteen million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four, and to reduce the education operating budget by seventy thousand dollars for a new net education operating budget of forty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six, resulting in a new net total budget for s- of sixty-nine million, nine hundred and eighty-seven, eight hundred and seventy-three. And can I get a second?
Second?
So, since this is now mine, I'll I'll explain the rationale behind this. Uh, so this would reduce the town, the, excuse me, the school operating budget by seventy thousand dollars. Um, to be one hundred percent honest here, I think this is essentially still us uh taking one-twenty from the school. Uh, their cap- their appropriated capital was reduced by fifty grand at the town finance committee meeting. And I believe that 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 was reduced foreshadowing this. I could be wrong. I I know that that was a, that was confusing for all of us. Um, but I feel as if this is essentially doing similar to what Counselor Gleistine um motion was in the beginning. But I feel like it's in the spirit of compromise and doesn't necessarily add too much salt to the woods. Um, so with that, I guess I'll take this. So again, this would be us passing fifty grand to the taxpayer and taking uh, reducing the operating budget of the school by seventy thousand dollars. If you're interested, that would bring a mill rate increase of fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents at a, which is a one point one-six percent increase to the mill rate. Counselor Caterina?
Yeah, um, I, you know, I love to compromise. I love to come to a middle ground as much as possible, but I'm afraid in this one I'm gonna have to stick to my guns, just because um, having heard the speakers tonight, having talked to many people uh offline emails and whatever I've gotten from school people, and being in a supporter of strong public schools myself, I I just don't want to see any more come out of the schools. Um, even though I'm not happy with them right now, not with them, but with school board uh over uh some of the uh chess game, uh whatever that was going on, but uh I would not support this.
Thank you. Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I like this compromise. Um, I think it has uh, there's some elegance in the symmetry, you know, the the split that you've identified is this is roughly approximates is sixty forty split that represents the respective school uh and ta- and municipal portions of the buzzet of the budget. So, you know, I think this is fair. I know that we're probably gonna have people on both sides who don't like it at all. Um, but I think this is uh getting us to a point where we can safely say our work is you know, close to being done, and that we need to get it in front of the public to hear what they say about it.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Counselor Gleistine?
Uh, yes, I support this. Um, and I'll just uh reiterate uh one more time. I hope that the um school employees, I've never personally picked on our our teachers. I think, you know, I that I think it's about more than just that. Um, we have all town employees taking moderate, very moderate um concessions uh to their their expected COLA increase. They're all still getting COLA. There are still steps in place. There are still promotions. Um, uh, this is a very modest ask, and I would hope that uh the school employees step up to the plate and do what uh the town employees have done uh for the good of Scarborough.
Counselor Clucci?
Yeah, I I appreciate the spirit of compromise, and 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 this is how it's been, right? We we're kind of on opposite sides of the spectrum. We try to meet in the middle. Unfortunately, on this one, I I just can't support reducing the education operating budget any any further. Um, it it it, I think they're already gonna be in peril next year um and and struggling, so um, I I won't support it for that reason. And the other reason is, the the teacher's pay skill has been at the lower end of the spectrum, and the contract is gonna slowly get them to the middle of the pack. They're not necessarily in the same equity position as the town staff, so uh, but I I I'm I'm hopeful that the town get their the town staff do get their increase.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
I mean, I mean, this is a real challenge, and I and I think, you know, tonight, we we heard a lot of passionate voices, and I totally understand. But what we haven't also heard is, these are unusual times. I mean, if if I I think every one of us knows somebody that has lost their job um going to Counselor Gleistine's, some of the major corporation here, folks like L.L. Bean, folks like Wex and others, I know folks in those organizations where management came to him and said, hey, look, there's two choices. Either we can do layoffs or everybody can take a little bit of of a reduction, whatever it is, to preserve jobs. And a lot of people have looked at that. So when I look ahead, and we just got the, we've been asking to see the teacher's contract. We just got it yesterday. Um, the teachers are gonna get fifty percent over the next three years, and it escalates upward. And I and I think to get to, I think next year is gonna be just as tough as this year for the budget process. Um, I I think, I I think this, I I, to paraphrase Counselor Hamel, I think this is a, you know, a compromise and an elegant solution in some ways. It reverts back to one of the other speakers had said when we got to these impasses, we would split the differences on the sixty forty sort of ratio. Um, you know, if this is one town, one budget, all of us are are gonna be making sacrifices. But but I really, you know, we need to think about, and this will be part of the next conversation. There are a lot of people in this town that are really facing financial hardship. And that's part of my consideration, that that we need to think of them also. So I will support this. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so before I call the vote, and this is, obviously, this is rough math, so excuse me if it's not hundred percent accurate, but if we take Ms. Layton's remarks of a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall of their second reading, we back out the two seventy-five for the increased architect. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall between where we are and where the school board's second reading is. So this will add to that shortfall, so we're we're roughly about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars if we ignore the architect for a second. This puts us about two hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference between where we are in the operating budget and where the um Board of Education passed. Just for reference for everybody watching and for us. Um, again, that's back of the napkin, so I assure you those aren't exact, but I think it at least gives the public a general understanding of where we are, and it gives us, and it gives everybody else a general understanding of where we are. Um, so with that, Tony, do you want to call the vote?
Counselor Clucci?
No.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Counselor Caterina?
No.
Counselor uh Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Tony. So we are now back to the main motion as amended twice, and we have a third motion and final motion, if we're all lucky, um, from Counselor Caterina. Go for it, Jean Marie.
Yes, thank you. And I want to uh thank everyone for their patience with this. Um, I have here, it's do you want me to read the, I'll read the motion and I'll explain it.
In a second, and then I'll let you talk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, move approval to amend the main motion as amended to add fifty-eight thousand dollars to cover additional costs related to the expanded benefits under the senior property tax program. Such additional amount to be raised through taxation for a new total debt, I can't talk tonight, net budget of seventy million, forty-five, eight seventy-three. And that's the motion in.
And I guess my only thing is, Tom, point of order, does that, did that motion that's printed in front of her assume we passed motion two in the way that I have it written? I just want to make sure the net appropriate.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe those numbers are correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Um, is there a second?
Second.
And Jean Marie, would you like to lead the conversation?
Sure. Um, and again, I know you guys have heard about this. I think I started with this in January or February, uh, and then COVID came along. Um, the reason for this, I just want to remind people of some demographics of what's going, of some folks in town. I originally proposed this because of issues with the revow. And a lot of people, particularly on my side of town, I live out in North Scarborough. There are a lot of older folks here who've lived here for a long time, and old homesteads and whatever, and their property values went up uh en- enormously, to be honest with you. Um, and currently, um, we offer six hundred dollars and a ta- up to six hundred dollars in it in a, in a refundable tax credit for seniors. They have to have lived here for ten years. Um, and there are other things with this, but just the demographics, the median age of eligible participants in the program is seventy-seven. The median adjusted gross income is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. So that's under twenty thousand dollars a year these folks are living off of. And their median tax burden is three thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, I'm rounding that, which is sixteen percent of that median, um, excuse me, of that median adjusted gross income. So that means there are So that means there are a hundred and eighty folks, if we're talking about median here, who are, who are making less than nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty six a year. And when I say making, I'm, I'm sure it's coming in social security benefits, basically. And I just feel very strongly that by giving them a little more cash that they can use for medication, oil, gas, whatever, would be very helpful. Particularly grocery costs have gone up enormously due to COVID. Just that alone would be most helpful. So this is why I'm bringing this forward and I thank you.
Thanks, Jean Marie. Any comments? Counselor Hamel?
I had a question. Are, are we, are we going to address funding as well or is that something we, you know, we should do now or later?
It's in the, it's in the motion.
Could you please confirm that, please?
Yeah, because the motion says such additional amount to be raised through taxation. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm, clarification on that.
Yep.
Yep. So this would be, this would be added to the town net operating budget. So it would increase the mill rate to fourteen dollars and eighty eight cents for a grand total of an increase of one point two four percent, which I still think is one point two two percent, but I'll let Ruth have this one. Peter?
Just a quick question. Jean Marie, sort of those stats, I was just curious. How many of those households you just referenced, are they, most of them eligible for the homestead exemption too? That's going to go up this year?
I don't have that statistic. Remember, these also go to renters.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, so I mean, I'm just, the homestead exemption's great, but it's not money in your pocket. This tax credit is a refundable credit, so it's cash back. So that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah. And I guess for me, for where I am on this one, I think I probably won't support this, this even at this point, only because I think, you know, this doesn't really change any of the expenditure lines. What this is doing is it's transferring this property tax relief to others in the community. And some of those others in the community that don't qualify for the senior tax credit, there are families that have lost all of their family household income. So there's lots of people in our community that are being impacted. To the extent some of these seniors have the homestead, they'll be in a good place. And I'm concerned about, about the creep to one point two four percent. So I would support this maybe another year, but I'm not going to support it tonight.
Thanks, Peter. Counselor Kuchi?
Yeah, I fully support this as well. And, you know, when we look back a, a year ago to the revow, properties that were in the, the second to lowest decile, their, their values were around a hundred and nine to two hundred thousand dollars. Values in that price range went up forty five to forty eight percent. If you look at the higher valued homes in town, those valued at more than five hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, those properties went up, you, twelve to thirteen percent. So there's a huge discrepancy that happened to the lower end of the market because of the revow. This helps to shift some of that tax burden away from those people who already got hit really hard last year towards some at the upper end of the spectrum that whether they could afford it or not, did not get the same bad news last year with the revow. So for those reasons, I, I, I fully support this and I thank Counselor Catarina for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Gleistine?
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. This is a group of folks that, you know, we definitely want to help. And I appreciate the spirit of this. It's, you know, the stats are astounding that Counselor Catarina brought forward. But I think it was a controversial meeting on a different topic, topic this past winter, when one thing about that meeting stood out to me, apart from that vote related to a controversial topic, was that Project Grace came and said that they were earning, you know, raising money for heating assistance. And they were able to give some money to some folks for some heating assistance. And I won't get the exact number right, but what people said in that vein was they would be able to put their thermostat up to fifty six degrees. So we had folks who, you know, could not have their thermostat up, you know, above, you know, fifty two, fifty three degrees. You know, I, I think this, I agree with Peter that this is a tough year to do this. I think one of the most important things is, is to help people stay in their home. And that's to keep, to keep, to keep expenses and taxes as low as possible. But this is a group that I would, I would like to see get, you know, some assistance. So I am supporting this tonight.
Counselor, Tom, did you want to say something and then Don?
Just to the extent that it may sway certain counselors, I, I know certain of you are, are very interested in what effect it has on the tax rate. I, I hesitated to mention this to, to now, but I, there's no reason to hold it back because I have a high degree of confidence. We now have better and new information that we actually have very high confidence in that we could, we should be comfortable using the optimistic estimate at this point. And so to the extent that that is helpful to you in your final decision. But we did get some information from CMP through a self-reporting. So this is information they're telling us. We're not speculating on. And just appreciate, we were so tight on our projections this year. There's only a five million dollar difference between optimistic, mid-range and cautious. And so to the extent that helps you in your decisions, I just wanted to bring that forward to you.
Counselor Hamel?
Walked the long road on this issue. I know it came up months ago. And credit to Counselor Catarina for, for bringing this forward. At that time, we said, we're okay with it, but we think we're going to have a tough year. This was before COVID hit and we said, we just want to run it through the process. So I didn't think when we agreed to do that, that it would be the caboose, you know, the absolute caboose on the train here. But this is clearly a need and it's nice to hear things, you know, breaking our way maybe in some small measure. So I, I support this.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is the forgotten generation. For a lot of folks that we've been hearing from the school board, I want to remind you, twenty percent of the people who live in Scarborough are over sixty five. So I, I firmly believe if we can give fifty three million dollars to support our children, which I totally support, we can give fifty eight thousand dollars to support our seniors. Thank you.
Tody, you want to call the vote, please?
Counselor Kuchi?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
No.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Counselor Catarina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so now we are all done with our motions unless somebody is going to Houdini something, which I won't allow. Mr. Hamel, put your hand down if it's an amendment. No, just kidding. Go ahead.
Kenny, that's one of my favorite figures. What we forgot to do was we were going to have, we're going to ask the town manager, even though there's no town manager report, to give us some words of, of direction to the public in terms of what might happen in the event of, of a no vote on July fourteenth and going forward. I know this has been a topic of much discussion over the past several weeks and months. And I, I've heard various positions on it, but I, I would think that I certainly would benefit and either the public, I hope the public would as well.
Okay, great. Yes, Don. So before we do that, just to recap where we are, we have the main motion on the table. We have three amendments that have passed. The last thing we're doing is discussing and voting on the whole enchilada. So I will let Mr. Hall have the first ti, the first turn to discuss the whole enchilada.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yes, in the event that the, the school budget fails to get voter validation between now and then and, and until a new budget is approved by the, the voters, the budget that we work under is the last one approved by this body, by the town council. So it would be the budget you're approving this evening. Beyond that, from my perspective, the town budget is approved upon your, your vote this evening. We appreciate that we may be part of further discussions, should that be required. I think I can speak for all of us. I hope that's not the scenario that we need to explore fully.
Thank you. Does anybody want to offer any comments to the budget? I'm sorry, Don, you feel like you have a follow-up question, so go ahead.
Question. So if we work through that and we have subsequent turndown, say, you know, both sides don't like what we've done this evening, it goes down in flames. What if, what happens if there are subsequent votes and, and consecutive turndowns?
It's the most recently adopted budget by the town council. So it would, it would change depending, you know, as you approve subsequent budgets going forward.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, sir. Any last, last words on the budget? Okay. Oh, Counselor Kuchi?
Sorry, I, I.
I tried.
Yeah, you were quick there. You know, it's been a tough budget season, right? And it's been a tough time for a lot of folks. And I, I, I wish that I could have done more to try to help bring clarity and reassurance during a time when people need it. And unfortunately, there's still a lot of uncertainty baked into this budget. I think there's probably less than when we started, so there has been some progress. But one thing that I, I feel like we kind of have neglected is looking towards the future and how we adapt to change. I don't feel like this budget does that enough. It, it manages the numbers to a level that we're comfortable with. In the extreme effort that it took to do that, I feel like we've missed, unfortunately neglected the other side of the equation, which is how do we ensure that our, you know, residents are able to survive next year and, and get the services that they deserve and expect, maybe in a different way? And then how do we pay for them? So I, I, I think we may have missed a little bit of the dance. It's nobody's fault. It was a tough year. But that's just kind of some of my closing comments on the budget for this year.
Thank you. Any others? No, Tody disappeared, so I'm going to, Tom, can you call the vote or?
Certainly, certainly. Counselor Kuchi?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to reframe this for me, Tom. I totally lost what, this is the, the budget vote?
Yes, I figured. This is the, the budget as amended.
As amended, yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Catarina?
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to order number twenty zero three two, which is the second reading on the proposed amendment, chapter thirteen A, Town of Scarborough Property Tax Assistant Ordinance, Section Five, Determination of Eligibility and the Amount of Eligibility. I'm going to ask that we do this quickly because we've already determined this. So is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Tody, could you call the vote, please?
I'm sorry, I lost internet connection there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're doing the second reading of the tax property tax.
Counselor Kuchi?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Counselor Catarina?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, we are on recess until eight thirty two. We will be reconvening at eight thirty two before new business. Don, thanks for the reminder there with Tom.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
Yeah, I thought I had, he had, he had chimed in earlier in the night, so I, I felt like it was done, but it wasn't. Your specific concern was not addressed, so thank you.
Thanks. If you're going to send us an invite for the next.
Yeah, there'll be separate individual invites to a different Zoom, so you just got to give me a few minutes to close this out, like usual, yeah.
Great.
Frankly, well, I know it's only one thing we're working through, but I might take another five minute break between now and the executive session, so.
Yeah, I think we deserve one, yeah.
One thing this council does agree on, we do appreciate our breaks.
I wouldn't say that.
I hope, I, I hope my legacy is the guy that did, had more recesses than any. I hope, I, I hope my legacy is the guy that did, had more recesses than any other chair in the history of Scarborough.
And, and I have to apologize, I was, you know, off on and on video because I was eating enchiladas at my desk here, so it was ugly. I haven't eaten. Sorry.
A robot.
Peter, are you there? All right, I'm going to wait a couple minutes or when Peter pops in, we'll-
Sorry, yep, I was here, I was just listening, sorry.
Yep, your camera's all out of whack.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, um, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you, everybody. We are now on order number 20059, which is an act on the request to approve the settlement agreement with Oak Hill Holdings LLC at all for a tax abatement for tax year 2018 and authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents. Tom, I think this probably takes some explaining, so if you will.
Yes, I'm pleased to. This was a subject of a brief discussion among the council and their legal counsel before this meeting or the first thing on this, first item on this meeting. This matter comes to the council by way of a fairly lengthy process. The appellants in this case are 21 non-residential properties in town. They are contesting their 2018, 19 valuation. That was the year that the non-residential or said another way, the commercial industrial revaluation occurred. Interestingly, they are not questioning the values themselves. They are making a claim that the actions of the town were unconstitutional by virtue of doing the town in two different phases. This matter was first denied at the, by the town assessor and subsequently the matter was heard before our local board of assessment review, who upheld the assessor's position. And the next step in this process is being heard by the state board of assessment review. A mandatory prerequisite before the board will hear a case is, is mediation and that occurred last month. And what, what we bring forward this evening is the result of that process. In this case, the appellants believe that they've been harmed and have asked for about $300, $440,000. We don't believe that that's the case. In fact, I think we have some very strong legal arguments on our side, but nonetheless, this town knows all too well, protracted litigation gets expensive. And so with the spirit of that and really kind of the obligation to make sure the council's aware of an opportunity potentially, we're before you with a settlement of this case for $125,000. The timing would be such that that payment would be made before the end of the fiscal year. And so it would arguably worsen our, our problem that we're currently experiencing in this year where a number of abatements, sizable abatements have been, have been granted. I did take this into account somewhat in revising my estimate for use of fund balance for next year. So with that, perhaps I'll stop and I'll, I'll be pleased to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Tom? Counselor Clucci?
How time sensitive is this? Is this something that, that you feel like you need a decision on today?
I think that would be preferred. We've actually delayed it two meetings because of other challenges on our agenda. With all due respect, I'm not sure what more needs to be understood, but we could certainly grab some extra time if possible. I wouldn't want to extend it months if possible, but we can certainly do weeks.
Okay.
I see the value in having this charged against the current fiscal year, frankly. So that's part of my motivation as well.
Thanks, Tom. Any more questions for Tom? Motion on the table, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Discussion?
Um, I, you know, I saw this on the agenda and I just, basically I was not happy. I feel very strongly that if the, our assessor and the Appeals Board, Assessment Appeals Board bar is not, it doesn't feel that there's a case here that we should be settling. I think it sets a bad precedent. Maybe the thing to say as well, we would consider settling, but if you return what you get back to all of the people who are renting from you in a reduction in their rents. So that's where I'm at with this one.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same place on this one. You know, I understand the desire to mediate and to resolve an issue and I generally am in favor of doing those things to keep life simple. But in this case, I, I think that, not to get into too, too much strategy and tactics, but I, I think maybe we're a little early with, with the offer. I think there will be other opportunities down the road for us to revisit this. And from what I've heard, I, I think it would make sense for us to stand pat and, and, you know, not to, not to pursue mediation. I know it's funded, so that's a comfort, but that's not a good reason to do it.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward with offering this settlement to, to not incur more legal costs than we've already incurred at this point. And the, in terms of, you know, I think it's a creative idea, you know, that Jean Marie had to say, you know, if you, if you get the settlement, you give a rent decrease. But you know, I think we, we heard earlier, these folks, their tax bill went from 252K to 889K and they're not disputing that. And so there's a big nut to swallow there. I, I do know that there were many businesses that, you know, felt that the way that we split it, I believe, you know, Tom has explained, we certainly had the right to do that, but it did put a bit, a large burden on the, our commercial property tax holders because they did not receive the benefit of actually getting the reduced bill rate that our, our residents and our businesses got the next year. So I'm in favor of putting this behind us, getting into FY '20 and not expending any more legal fees.
Any others? Counselor Hayes and then Counselor Clucci?
Sorry about that. Two questions for, for the town manager, Tom, building on what Counselor Gleistine said. How much are we into it for legal already? I mean, what have we expended to get to where we are and what would we expend to get to the next round of conversations, if you will?
Yeah, I believe we're in the order of 15,000 or so to date and that's representation through the local board and through mediation.
Yeah.
Also mediation fees. The estimate to get to the state board, because we, we may need some professional assistance, witnesses and alike, is at $25,000 to move through the next step.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only reason I ask is I, I think we mentioned it earlier, but having lived through some of these others, the legal fees do become almost as much as, as the settlement amount in some cases, so.
The other thing I would just note is interest continues to accrue. And so, you know, that's a factor. I don't think it's a huge factor in this regard, but it's, it matters over a series of years.
So the specific proposal on the table is to settle for a specific amount or is this motion to authorize the town manager to make?
No, specific amount. The agreement was included in the council packet and that, that amount is $125,000.
Thank you.
And Tom, I know you mentioned this to us in executive session, but this wasn't anticipated, so it is at least in, to a large, large extent taken, you took this into consideration for this current budget season we're in and, and the one we're, we just voted on, correct?
Yes, as a result of, well, I instituted a curtailment back in, in December in large part because we at that point knew that there were significant abatements being granted over the course of the year and they would continue and they have. There were some other over expenses that we're aware of in legal. And so that curtailment has produced results and then we made some more aggressive actions this spring, really driven by the COVID situation, which was to put our folks on work share. So we do expect to provide a, a year-end surplus and so I've lowered that estimate compensating for this as well, but our overlay will continue to be overspent significantly.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Clucci?
I, I'm leaning in support of settling this now for a couple of reasons, similar to Counselor Gleistine. I, I think there's some benefit to closing the door on this. They, they received over a 300% tax increase in one year. That's a tough pill to swallow. Whether it was the right value, which it appears as though it was, it's still a really tough pill to swallow. And it was exacerbated by the fact that we only revalued commercial properties and not residential properties. I think that if we'd have made a, a high level adjustment to get equity across those two categories, then it would have been completely justified, but I actually think that, that we did them some harm and there probably do some compensation. And this is roughly what our legal cost could be, but I think it's a fair deal for the town.
Any others? Yeah, I guess I would just add, I, I disagree to the extent that I, I don't think they necessarily have a case, so to speak, but if we're, if we're looking this as a cost benefit analysis and what our expected value is at the end of this, this brings us close to even. I don't, I don't, this definitely limits our variability if we were to do this. And so I think this is a high variability situation and it's, I, I'm erring on the side of knowing what the damage is. If I were to fast forward a year from now, I think we would win, but it's almost irrelevant, so.
We'd spend 50,000 more dollars to get to that point, though. That's the challenge.
So I think I'm going to call the vote, just unless there's anybody, all right, Tody?
Counselor Clucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Counselor Katerina?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
No.
And Chairman Johnson?
Did Don and Jean Marie just vote together and they? Oh, yes.
Hell, just froze over.
Chairman Johnson, your vote?
I have to be a yes, so they're the only two now, so yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Order number 20060 is an act on the request for an executive session pursuant to Title 1 of the MRSA 4056C regarding a personnel matter relating to the town manager's employment agreement not to come back to public session and to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tody?
Counselor Clucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Gleistine?
Yes.
Counselor Katerina? Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you.
So with that, I'm going to stop the recording and everybody, we're going to meet in executive session. You guys want to do, let's say, 8:52, give us another seven minutes.
Right.
I'll send you a link in a few minutes, so be patient with me, okay? I'm going to go take a walk. Okay.